Thank you and good evening to our weekly board meeting. We had to get another special night here in Village Ball. We have our outgoing chief Mike Civil, and then we will be swearing in new chiefs, who look to be ready to commit to the room. Welcome, Doug.
Thank you.
If I had to now call on Chief Mike Civil for his report.
Now it's on. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Fitzgerald, Deputy Mayor Dr. Pobano, trustee Giar, trustee Stewart, trustee Longavarti, members of the village administration, members of the department, fellow residents, friends and family. I stand before you tonight in what I describe as a bittersweet moment. The bitter part is that I am truly known to miss leading an amazing group of individuals who lift the served others over themselves. The sweet part is that I'm looking forward to hopefully regaining normal sleeping patterns. Before I read my final report, I want to say that it's been an absolute honor and privilege to serve as the chief of the floor park fire department. The last five years have been a humbling experience. It went extremely fast, but I am confident that we made great strides in many areas: radio communications, firefighting, health and safety, training and technology, just to name a few. Several years ago, we were faced with a challenge that no one had ever experienced before, which tested the will of all of us. But due to the dedication and courage of our members, we persevered. Yes, we lost some very good people as a result of this dreaded virus, and we will never forget their sacrifice. I will forever be grateful to each and every member of this department for your professionalism and dedication to serving the residents of this great village. This is the status of our department. Membership: The department membership consists of the following: ninety-four active firefighters and EMS members, twenty-seven ex-chiefs, one honorary chief, eleven probationary members, twenty-six associate members and three captains. This year, we sworn five new members and had five resignations. Alarms: The department responded to the following alarms: EMS calls, one thousand thirty-seven; fire calls, one hundred ninety-four; auto accidents, thirty-seven; hazmat-related calls, ten; carbon monoxide incidents, thirty-five; and mutual aid calls, eighty-nine, for a total call volume of one thousand four hundred and twelve calls. The department also battled three working house fires this past year. I'm happy to report that there were no injuries to firefighters or civilians at any of these fires. Total estimated fire loss and damage is estimated at two hundred thousand dollars. Training: The department writes itself on having a very aggressive training program. Our training program is broken into two parts: probationary training and the department show committee. The department has totaled over twenty-five-hundred man hours this year, including conducting various types of training. Some of the training taken by our members this past year is as follows: department operations, hazardous materials, long-on railroad safety, elevator emergencies, thermal imaging, injured company operations, May Day training, officers' training, building construction, radio communications, command and control, fast team training, vehicle education, stroke recognition, and cardiac arrest management. Thank you to the department show committee chair, chairman, ex-captain Eric O'Connor, and his committee for all their hard work and dedication. The department probationary training committee, led by ex-captain Pat Conroy, trained fourteen new members this past year. Not only are these members required to attend the Fire Service Academy for primary training, they have to go through our comprehensive in-house training. These members receive training on engine and ladder company operations, SCBA, firefight removal, vehicle education, extinguishes, tolls, and radio communication. Thank you to ex-captain Conroy and his committee for all their time and effort put in throughout the year training of firefighters. Purchasing: There were forty-six purchasers and one hundred and two vouchers processed this year. I would like to thank village administrator treasurer Jerry Manver and deputy treasurer Steve Adon for their time and efforts in the purchasing process. Medicals and fit testing: Every year, all active firefighters are required to take an OSHA physical. In addition to the physical, every interior firefighter is required to take an SVA fit test as well. EMS members are required to fit test on N-95 and ask as well. Thank you to Chief Dotson for his hard work and time overseeing this important committee. A big thank you to firefighter Dig Sparrow and ex-captain Coward Gohn for all their time and efforts in administering these tests. Radios: The department's radio communications have significantly been improved since the installation of a new high-wattage UHF antenna last May. With technology rapidly changing, it can be challenging keeping up with the latest equipment. We have been informed that by the end of 2023, Nassau County Fire Communications Fire Con plans on switching over to a strictly high-band radio dispatch system. This will mean further equipment changes for the department, and the radio committee, led by Chief Dan Bennett, is already making plans for this switch. The department fleet of vehicles consists of the following: a 2019 Ferrari Ignite Hummer, a 2002 Spark Salisbury Hummer, a 1998 Spark Salisbury Hummer, 2004 Pierce 95-foot mid-mound tower ladder, a 1984 MacCavrey rescue truck, a 2015 Ford F-450 ambulance, a 2021 Chevy Tahoe cheese vehicle, two 2019 Chevy Tahoe cheese vehicles, a 2017 Chevy Tahoe cheese vehicle, a 2016 Chevy Tahoe cheese vehicle, a 2018 Ford Transit passenger van, a 2003 Chevy Express van, and a 1931 American LaFerrari Antenna. Work orders: It goes without saying, our vehicle fleet needs to be in top shape at all times. A total of forty-four vehicle work orders and twenty-three housework orders were submitted over the past year. I would like to extend a huge thank you to DPW superintendent Kevin Gane and his hard working staff for all their help in keeping the fleet and our buildings in top shape. Whatever the time of day it was or the problem it was, Kevin was always a phone call away, and he would get us the help and assistance we needed. The hard work and dedication of our mechanics and building maintenance staff does not go unnoticed, and I thank them again for all their help. Pump, ladder, and hose testing: Each year, every length of hose in the department is tested and certified, as is every portable ladder. Any defective or damaged piece of equipment is immediately removed from service and replaced. In addition to this, our three-engine companies must pass a pump hose, a pump test every year as well at the Fire Service Academy. I would like to thank Chief Luger for all his efforts in scheduling and overseeing these tests. Fire explorers: Our fire explorer program continues to thrive thanks to the dedication of post-chefman, ex-chief John Florio, and co-chefman, ex-captain Eric Durk. The post has, now has nine members and six advisors. This past year, all members were certified in CPR and received additional medical training thanks to our rescue company. Explorers regularly train throughout the year in the engine company and truck company operations. The post is comprised of a group of eager young men and women who want to learn fire and EMS skills. If you know someone between the ages of fourteen and seventeen who might be interested in learning about the fire service, have them reach out to us, they are always looking for new members. Fire prevention: The topic of fire prevention is traditionally discussed in the month of October. The floor park fire department has a dedicated fire prevention committee which promotes fire safety year-round. The department is often called upon to speak to various schools and civic groups within the village in regards to fire safety topics. In addition, the department hosts no-risk tours of our firehouses through the year. This year, the department conducted ten firehouse tours and fire safety lectures for schoolchildren and scout groups. And it is our goal, each and every time, that the children learn something and take home with them the message of fire safety to their families. Thank you again to Chief Luger and his committee for all that hard work through the year. Foreign inspections: The department hosts a very thorough and active fire inspection program under the leadership of Chief Bennett and ex-chief John Florio. This past year, over three hundred and forty inspections were conducted of commercial establishments and the public areas of multiple dwellings. I would like to extend a big thank you to building superintendent Renee Marcus for all her assistance in this area. There has been a lot of building construction in the village over the last few years, and the fire department always has a vested interest in learning how these buildings are designed, constructed, and laid out. This is to keep all our members safe in the event we are called to operate one of these structures. At this time, I would like to take a moment to thank and recognize individuals who have helped the fire department through the year, making my job a lot easier. To Mayor Fitzgerald and the board of trustees, thank you for always supporting the department, and allowing us the time to sit down with you to discuss any ideas or proposals we had. You always helped us accomplish our goals. The chief staff is extremely appreciative for your continued hard work and dedication to make this village a great place to live. I would like to congratulate newly-elected trustees Jen Stewart and our very own ex-chief Mike Longavarti. We wish you the very best as you begin a new venture, and please know the fire department will always support you. And to former trustee and fire commissioner Archie Chang, we thank you for all your years of service to the village and appreciate all the support you have given us. I would be remiss if I failed to mention the help that Darlene Lanza, Courtney Dolan, Terry Paterno, and Evelyn Schultz have provided to the department throughout the year. I definitely had Darlene's number on speed dial, but I usually prefer to show up at her desk unexpectedly and annoy her until she gets me the answer I was looking for. In all seriousness, these ladies were always a huge help to me and the staff, and we appreciate all their support. To village attorney John Ryan, I can't thank you enough for all your help and guidance throughout the years, especially this year. Your support for the department will not be forgotten. To my boss, Commissioner McCauser, and my fellow coworkers at the police department, thank you for all the support you have given me and the fire department over the years. The relationship that the police department and fire department has in this village is truly special, and at the end of the day, we always work as one unified fire team to protect and serve the residents of the village. Be safe and continue to look out for one another. To my department secretaries, ex-chief Joe Brady and ex-chief Frank Bradley Jr., thank you for all the time and effort you put in throughout the year. It is truly a thankless job, and your hard work does not go unnoticed. To my department treasurer, ex-captain Paul Pinto, thank you for all your time and effort throughout the year. Your hard work and dedication also does not go unnoticed. To ex-chief Mike Longavarti, the entire staff thanks you for all your help and guidance in the office throughout the year. To the staff I started in the chief's office with five years ago, ex-chiefs Longavarti, Dave Michaels, Sal Reedor, and Pat McCauser, thank you for your guidance and showing me the ropes. Now to my staff, Jeff, Brian, Danny, and Gil, I couldn't have done it without you. I can't express my appreciation enough for all the hard work and dedication you guys put into making this department run every single day. We've faced a lot of difficult times over the years, but you all hung in there, realizing that we had a job to do. Each one of you has got above and beyond, and you should all be commended. In between answering at times non-stop calls, you were at your desk scheduling pump tests, registering members for Fire Service Academy classes, looking over fire inspections, entering work orders, keeping track of medicals, and always a part of your game. Thank you again for your dedication. Thank you to my company, Hook and Ladder Company II, the best truck company in Nassau County. I appreciate all the support over the years. Congratulations to Eric O'Connor, the newly-elected fourth assistant chief. Best of luck, Eric, you have a great staff. And now to the people in my life who make this dream and passion a mark hospital, my beautiful family, my wife, Van, my children Michael and Kate, I would not have been able to do this without your unwavering support and understanding. I have honestly lost track of the amount of dinners, family parties, and sporting events that I've had to run out on to answer a call. But I always knew that you understood when the page went off that someone was having a very bad day and needed the help of the fire department. Kate, I will miss you being my chief's aide on calls and complaining sometimes that I didn't talk close enough. The action, so you can see what was going on. I love you all, and I will always be grateful for you guys for allowing me to fulfill my dream. We have a lot of catching up to do, and it will be a lot easier since I don't have a call now. There are a few other special people I want to recognize. To my parents who are present here tonight, thank you for all your encouragement and support over the years. And I want to wish my brother Rob good luck with continued success in his duties as a chief in the planned on fire department. Who knows, maybe one day he will pay us back for the mutual aid to throw apart. Lastly, I would like to say thank you again to the men and women of this great department for your dedication and service. You truly are professionals, and I am proud to have served you as chief. Mayor Fitzgerald and board of trustees, I am certain that the department is being left in great hands, and now it's my true honor to introduce to you a group of talented and hardworking individuals, the newly-elected chief staff of the floor park fire department for the year 2022-2023. Fourth assistant chief Eric O'Connor from the Hook and Ladder Company. Third assistant chief Gil Luger from the Activision Company. Second assistant chief Dan Bennett from the Rescue Company. First assistant chief Brian Howden from the Reliance Engine Company. And your new chief of department from the Alert Engine Company, James Dotson. I made a change before, and I know that was gonna happen. I just wanted to thank the village administration, village administrator treasurer Jerry Manver, Susan Walsh, for all their hard work and support through the years. Obviously, you know, we would speak to each other probably several times a week, and they helped us through a lot of issues, and we appreciate their support, and I forget that. Thank you very much. So now, Mayor Fitzgerald, I now respectfully request to be relieved of my duties as chief of the floor park fire department.
Before we get there, Mike, I think a couple members of the board have a couple statements to make. I'll start with Deputy Mayor Pobano, who also leads the fire department.
Do you want to sit down for a story?
I'm good. I'm gonna be walking a lot, so I gotta get you still.
Good evening, everyone, and a special welcome and good evening to the members of our floor park fire department and their families. It's really been a joy having you all here together. Chiefs of Bill. Tonight, we congratulate and applaud you for your extraordinary life of service in our village, fire department, police department, and in so many other ways. That last Monday's fire academy, attended by your fellow chiefs, officers, firefighters, and emergency medical staff, you received two long-standing ovations. They were heartfelt, meaningful, and filled with admiration and gratitude. Your colleagues in the fire department agree on many things when they praise your leadership. Your strong values, ethics, and integrity encompass all you do. It comes from your mind, your heart, and your soul. It's always present and it's always genuine. Whether you are leading a fire department full of leaders into a fire or other emergency situation, engaging in training, or collaborating in meetings, we all say that they can count on you to lead with others in making the right decisions for the right reasons. Always with care and safety, all our citizens, our firefighters, rescue staff, our police, and other first responders as your utmost priority. And speaking with your colleagues and others who know you well, the word "respect" is repeated time and time again. That constant show of your respect for all, no matter what the situation, how calm, enjoyable, stressful, or frightening, those around you feel and appreciate the respect you give. That respect is returned in kind and makes you one of the most highly respected professionals in our village. And it's that mutual respect and love that are behind those two standing ovations and so many other well-deserved accolades you receive. Chief Civil has served on our fire department since 1985. With the Hook and Ladder Company, he has been a second and first lieutenant, a captain, an assistant chief for four years, and chief of department, but always first and foremost a firefighter, dedicated to the fire service tradition. We all see him walk the tour, and no one does it better than he does. Chief Michael Fidel in both the fire department and throughout his twenty-six years in the police department, always the best. Tonight, Mayor Fitzgerald will reduce the ose of orders to our incoming chief of department, James Dotson, and assistant chiefs Brian Hammerin, Dan Bennett, Bill Dugger, and Eric O'Connor. We congratulate our chief staff. May God protect you, and our fire department will keep you all safe. And to Chief Civil, Ann, Ann Bunk, and Katie, District Mrs. Civil, and your entire family, thank you all for the service you have given to our village and all of us who live here. May God bless you all, ladies.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Assistant Chair.
Chief Civil, Mike, thank you very much for your years of service here with the fire department and all the years of service you gave to our community. Mike, you look with your leadership skills as being a calm, confident person. You were always reassuring that everything was going well in your own home in any scene, in any incident that occurred. You led the department in a very positive manner. You led the department in a very positive manner, and you lead in a very positive manner. We want to thank you very much for all your years of service. It takes very special individuals to volunteer to service and pick them, and at times place their own safety at risk. Mike, I know you've done that a number of times in your service to our community, and I want to thank you, and I want to thank all of them, so the volunteer fire department, for all the service that you do for our community. We are so truly blessed to have everybody, all you guys volunteering for us here in here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Trustee Stewart.
I think that those of us who have known you since you were a kid knew that you were always destined to be a leader, and I appreciate, as a lifelong resident, members of the department have come to my family's aid on some of our worst days, and there is nothing so reassuring as knowing that there are always people with such courage and kindness to help us out on those days. Thank you for your years of service. To you, gentlemen, thank you for your dedication to our community. Please stay safe.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Longavarti.
Mike, I don't think I can really add anything to that setup here, but I had the honor of serving on staff with you. Got to know you a lot better than I knew before that, so I come up with friendship now. I can attest to that leadership and that dedication, that unselfish, humbling leadership, and your skills are second to none. For me, it was an honor to serve with you, and I told you today to stand proud, you did a great, phenomenal job. Thank you for leaving.
Thank you, Mike, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And Chief, thank you for everything that you've done. When we get elected, we represent sixteen thousand people, so on behalf of the sixteen thousand people, that's a big number, thank you for all you've done. I know when you stepped into the chief's office five years, and how you've played a long period of time, though sure, but real fast, and you know, we get the pleasure and honor of seeing stuff from the inside, and it's always truly amazing to even see things. Everything's a new challenge. You've met every challenge, exceeded every challenge, so thank you. And, Mike, thank you for your time. And now, Chief, go back to your seat.
Thank you very much.
Before I further turn to new chiefs, I guess the last board meeting we scored in, new detective, and our phenomenal chief department was here, of course, and it looks like tonight, almost our entire fire department's here, and I just want to also thank you for everything you do, twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It really is amazing that we're in a special place where there's so many people willing to dedicate their time, energies, and efforts for their fellow residents. Thank you for that. Gentlemen, if you are ready to raise your hand, if you'd be able to make a little bit...
Aye.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
Under the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of New York. The laws and orders of the state of the floor park.
The laws and orders of the floor park.
The bylaws of the fire department, the floor park.
The bylaws of the fire department, the floor park.
And I throw the flowers. Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
But I don't like to do that.
But I don't like to do that.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thanks. Ladies and gentlemen, chiefs of the floor park... Ladies and gentlemen, the chiefs of the floor park. We will pause to agree with the mission. Those of you who want to say something, they're going to vote again.
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of the council's annual files files. General Fund, $1,192,530.20. Full Fund, $29,126,96. Capital Fund, $188,000 for a grand total of $1,221,836.30.
Any discussion?
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of the council's annual files files. General Fund, $1,192,530.20. Full Fund, $29,126,96. Capital Fund, $188,000 for a grand total of $1,221,836.30.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Trustee Longevoy. Trustee Chair. Trustee Stewart. Trustee Longevoy. And Mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
I would ask the board to give a report of rights and requests to these public facilities. I'd like to see a certificate of assurance that you can see upon the note that what is presented.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? And both carry.
I would ask the board to accept the letter of resignation of Joseph Moniz, a public court employee retroactive to April 12, 2022, and authorized payment for his current rules in accordance with the CSDA contract as presented.
How about that?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wolf, you're going to vote.
Trustee Longevoy. Trustee Chair. Trustee Stewart. Trustee Longevoy. And Mayor Fitzgerald. I would ask the board to approve the board body held on Central Zeddy between Coral Boulevard and Crocus on June 11, with a range date of June 12, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
That is not my station. Any further discussion? All in favor? The heads, the motions carry.
I would ask the board to authorize change order number one of the electrical distribution upgrade of the field lighting project in the amount of $12,720.
All in favor of the resignation?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wolf.
Trustee Longevoy. Trustee Chair. Trustee Stewart. Trustee Longevoy. And Mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
I would ask the board to award the municipal waste bid contract to Jamaica and Asher rubbish, 172 School Street, West Fairview Home with a base bid amount of $138,160. And authorize the mayor or village administrator to sign the contract.
How about that resolution?
I'll second. Any discussion?
Trustee Longevoy. Trustee Chair. Trustee Stewart. Trustee Longevoy. And Mayor Fitzgerald. I would ask the board to verify the stipulation within New York State of Public Health versus Biola and authorize payment of $2,500 for settlement of same.
How about that resolution?
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Longevoy. Trustee Chair. Trustee Stewart. Trustee Longevoy. And Mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
I would ask the board to verify the 2022-23 full season rates as presented.
How about that resolution? Second.
Any discussions? I'd just like to thank Trustee Stewart and Recreation Director Kirk Maitland for the work discussing with our full committee. Ms. Wolf, you're going to vote.
Trustee Longevoy. Trustee Chair. Trustee Stewart. Trustee Longevoy. And Mayor Fitzgerald. I would ask the board to write by the CSDA and arrange a agreement for a term of two years from June 1, 2022 through May 31, 2024.
All in favor of the resolution?
Second.
Any discussion? And I also, in case I think a little bit better, going for getting this contract done with our DPW work very well. Ms. Wolf, you're going to vote.
Trustee Longevoy. Trustee Chair. Trustee Stewart. Trustee Longevoy. And Mayor Fitzgerald. I would ask the board to adopt the 2022-23 tender budget as presented as the budget here comes up Wednesday, April 13, 2022.
How about that resolution?
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Wolf.
Trustee Longevoy. Trustee Chair. Trustee Stewart. Trustee Longevoy. And Mayor Fitzgerald. I would ask the board to adopt the law number one of 2022 and question every measure since property tax levy is a little bit of a tax cap, which this year is 2.5%.
How about that resolution?
Second.
I'd just like to mention that this is a precautionary measure. We do not intend to go over the tax cap. Just in case some unexpected change would happen in the coming next couple of weeks, we want to make sure that they're protected. Any further discussion on that? Ms. Wolf.
Trustee Longevoy. Trustee Chair. Trustee Stewart. Trustee Longevoy. And Mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
That's the only.
Thank you. Now, as for many ladies here, we would like to start with the mayor.
Thank you. As you can see from our agenda, we have lots of exciting events scheduled in the floor park. And I can't wait to tell you about some for our department of public works. Our DPW crews are everywhere these days. High hall control repairs are ongoing. Heart preparation for summer is enjoyable tasks as our parks come alive. Our families and friends home for a stroll, children playing. Our sports teams ramping up and floor park gatherings outdoors in their pleasant spaces. Road construction will begin in the spring on Stoner and through the District Park Lot. Marshall working to cover it. Clayton and Hensdale, Jericho, and Volker. Residents of those streets will be invited to a presentation in which plans for reconstruction will be presented with opportunities for comments and suggestions. Those residents should watch for flyers with details of this April 26, 7:30 to Monday. Again, residents who live on the streets where reconstruction will occur will receive those invitations over the coming days. Trees and spring go together in the floor park. PSMG is replacing approximately 14 damaged and weakened trees with 25 more beautiful trees on a playing field. New trees will be planted shortly. Residents can modify. Fifty pearly trees have been planted by the village in front of any happy residents' homes. More trees will be planted in June for DPW 506 through 663. Oh, we have a tree on the curb contract. For the chambers of the Comler Center businesses, on March 29, our Floor Park Chamber and Cover Avenue Chamber met for an enjoyable joint meeting. It was great to bring all of the floor park and Stewart Manor businesses together for a meet, greet, and play moment. Floor Park Chamber President Castor Eden Pete announced the return of the very popular Floor Park Chamber Street Fair on two of the avenue on Sunday, June 12, the culmination of the Belmont State's event. President Renee Dorkelovich of the Cover Avenue Chamber announced that their street fair will return on Saturday, October 15. These announcements are great news after two years of excitedly anticipated the return of these very, very special events, the short market calendar. And for the Conservation Society, the crowds are returning to Centennial Gardens as are the sunshine, warmth, including flowers, bushes, and trees. You can take part trip there daily between the hours of noon and 5:00 p.m. to experience the brightest colorful transformation of nature, including gardens where plants, animals, and birds are returning for the late spring and summer seasons. Then come celebrate with the Conservation Society and this annual, although first since 2019, Garden Party. This beautiful event will be held in the gardens on Friday evening, June 10, from 5:00 p.m. to sunset. Ushered Saturday's Belmont State's racing event with family and friends in our magnificent gardens. More details to follow. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And the, as you mentioned, trees, it's our longstanding commitment, being a Tree City USA, which we got the designation for many, many decades. To continue doing that, to the help of a great public works program by the Navy. Trustee Chair.
Thank you. From the police department, it's spring upon us and the weather getting warmer. Please drive safely throughout our village. Our children are moving around on their bicycles and skateboards, often free spirited, not paying full attention to traffic. So please keep an eye out for our children to avoid any unfortunate incidents. Our officers are out there enforcing all traffic regulations. Also, as a reminder, please lock your cars to avoid anyone from entering and taking your valuables. And our prevention really deters many thieves from a lot of these oil-related crimes. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Stewart.
Thank you. So spring is here, and that means much activity at the Floor Park Recreation Center. Tennis courts are being ready. Fields are awaiting the call of play wall as Little League is set to begin shortly. The annual Little League parade will be this coming Saturday, the 23rd, with a step off at Village Hall at approximately 9:30. Marching to the recreation center. After the parade, the opening ceremony will be led by newspaper meteorologist Meredith Barafolo singing the National Anthem. This will be followed by the Little League Festival, which includes a pitch and run competition as well as interactive carnival games. Come on down. You'll have some fun as the Little League kicks off its season. As of earlier today, the 2022 Recreation and Pool Booklet was made available on the village website. Card copies will now be mailed to each resident. If you prefer a card copy, you may pick one up at Village Hall, the library, or the recreation center. On May 11 will be a big registration night for all summer programs at the pool, including the whole day program. Much thanks to Jolene Lanza and Gina King and Recreation Superintendent Fermay for beginning the booklet together. As for the Long Island Railroad and the 3TC representatives from the railroad and the village offices, a few of the areas directly impacted by the Third Track Project with village officials early last week. Village officials are working hard to hold the railroad and 3TC to the amount we agreed to at the beginning of this massive project. Residents are encouraged to complete the 3TC's Community Scorecard, which can be found online. If you Google the number one Q 2022 and the words survey monkey, you can click on it and you will get this floor park survey. If you need assistance, please feel free to email me at jcstewart@fdvillage.gov, and I will help you access the survey. The village continues to work hard to mitigate any negative impact of construction right now.
And we all await that the walls will be put up on trust for the next couple of weeks. I know it's very exciting.
We'll see.
Trustee Longevoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the Floor Park Library, congratulations to the winner, the Friends Easter Basket, Peggy Byrne. Thank you, Peggy, and to all of you who took a chance on the basket and helped support our presence in the library. Just a reminder, the new bookstore, the Book Nookers, is now open. Current hours on Wednesdays from 12:00 to 2:00 and Saturdays from 10:30 to 12:30. Helping to combat identity theft, the library is hosting an onsite shredding event Friday, April 29, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. with Shred Away Inc. No registration is required, and you can bring up the fire box and begin the shred. Thursday, April 21, the library is hosting a spring break movie event between the library's movie screen. The movie is Sin Two, as for kids 12 and under. All kids under nine must be accompanied by an adult. Saturday, April 23, the Friends of the Library are holding their lawn sale on the library's front lawn. All sorts of vendors will host tables from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. At April 25th, from 6:00 to 8:00, they're hosting a game night for adults. Adults can play to hold more games and use the library games. It will run for a temporary period, and registration is required. And they're hosting from 3:30 to 5:00 on April 26, a team exam cram. There's a special study time reserved for those who need to study for upcoming tests. It's the first of eight weeks of reserved study time for teams. Some other events that may include paint like grades and defensive driving class on May 12, if anybody needs that. As always, you can find this and many other events and interesting items on the Floor Park Library website, www floorsparklibrary.org. And for Fordville Studios, the production of new shows is picking up this spring as the studio is building back to pre-pandemic levels. There were recent upgrades to some of the aging computer systems to keep them operating efficiently. And as well, there was some lighting upgrade right now to the studio to enhance the set for future productions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Longevoy. From my part, just real quick, on Thursday, May 5, the West End Civic Association Monthly Accord meeting, the guests will be President and CEO David O'Rourke of NIRA, along with the Senior Vice President of Operations and Capital Projects, Ken Hozak. And they will be at the meeting to discuss projects that they've committed to and upcoming projects that they'd like to do at Belmont Park. So that should be an interesting meeting. They do have a lot of ideas that hopefully will keep Belmont Park, like I've said many times, a beautiful Belmont Park. I think they got some good plans on people, of course, racing at Belmont for a very, very long time. Looking forward to that presentation. Anybody else welcome to come to that? We've had before a promotional call, I'd like to thank the other Red Duffy from Linsley Media, I see he's on the show tonight, and Felix Pafachi from Trustee Facts Media. It's the back of Felix, of course. Kind of most to close the call for the meeting before we get to President's question.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we did have a packed podium here. And those two gentlemen really want to speak, so, Maria and their guest stories will be very pleased. Thanks for coming to see.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We had a request. We got the word that they're concerned by Monday, the 30th, on American Legion. And we hope to request that from their people. We hope that we visit the way it traditionally would.
Yeah, looking forward to it. I know we did a missing year. We made a long way, we sure haven't happened. It was a year we absolutely had. Extremely important day for remembering the people who made this country great. And I'm glad that we can get back to what it used to be. I know, as I spoke, I would love to see as many organizations as possible come out and participate, even if it's three people with a banner, it'd be great to see.
Yeah, I'm like I said, off the pre-pandemic list, if you will, every civic organization is welcome. And they'll get, most now, as I stated to you previously, it's all mostly email invitations, even text messages, or scribble. Most people don't prefer not to get the letter anymore. By the time they get the letter, it's too late. But I shouldn't say that. But no, we do that. Our invited, Rand Marshall for the parade has accepted Mr. Ginger, who is Dr. Ginger. He's 100 years old. He survived the non-re landing on June 6th, 1934. And he two or three times come back and lived until they made a decision to finally be a better back and have the new kind of operations. And back into the fight. So it's quite a story. We invited him to be the guest speaker. And speaking to his son, Dr. Ginger, his father's very excited. His father was invited in 2019. He declined because of made the trip to non-re, the 70th anniversary. And he made a trip. So we're looking forward to that. The civic organizations, the schools, the John Woo Band, the FPM Band, the Trump Edition, the FPM, the TAPS, the Knights, the churches, the other civic organizations.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone on the board who agree with this, we'll talk to them.
We will.
I'm excited about this. I hope that you can. The only thing we need to do.
That's the one. That's a big list to be there. Just want to say thank you very much for it again. It's part of.
Hey, Matt, can you just give me a call to review the?
Absolutely.
We haven't got enough of these.
Absolutely. Based on your schedule, we could set up something that just.
Just me.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Generally, it'll be the same route?
Absolutely, yeah. Same, same route. With the force on Jericho at the Decom Memorial, Fire Hall, and the foundation place, which is there, South TAPS. Down to South Tyson, Devon Tyson, down to the right, the Harrison, and they go left and then you go to the little bit, go faster and come out there too. One thing, the number of snow, if anybody knows, I haven't been successful because the ones I've talked to will report. If anyone knows a pipe band that might be available to add to it.
I actually do.
Say again?
I actually do.
They make, they're not a book, yeah. Yeah, because we wanted really try to make this a very special year of like what's happened for the studios. The police color guard, as old as they even off. The same center areas, basically from Plainfield down, down Elizabeth, down to South Tyson. Basically, all the march elements as well as the cars. I'll stop right there because as more and more of the veteran population is aging, a lot of them can't make the march what they want to participate. So I'm spreading the ways I talk to the organizations. If they show up with a car, they're going to get sprayed. We'll just put the cars near the councilman, the Knights of Columbus Council, and the Northern Legion. Cars come up last behind the next march element, which is normally the Blue Week and the Scouts. And when they make the left to go up Plainfield, then the Fire Department is assembled on the other side of Elizabeth. They come out with their membership and their vehicles. Help with the, the, and the ceremony. Special invitation, if you know, want to invite any public officials, past or present. We won't set up a full tent. But we're going to look at the setting. Pop, I think a pop-up. You know the truth.
Nice.
A pop-up, a pop-up, I think will go nicely, especially if it's a sunny day, it keeps the, keeps the people on.
So the five of us are out and about every night, all the people will get the word out.
Please, yeah, please, please.
Yeah, I know people just love to come out.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I'd like a really big turnout, especially when they come out and they're using the air.
Yeah, it's awesome.
That's, that's, that's a good thing. And especially for the older ones, you know, who are there. It means a lot. So, thank you.
We're very lucky, Mr. Commissioner, very lucky.
You're blessed. So unless there's any questions from me or Bobby. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thanks everybody, go. All right, thank you, thanks to the public works and we meet you guys in the. Thank you again, thank you.
Anyone else here in the floor? Anyone on the Zoom? Thank you, that's it for the scene. Thank you very much and stay home, very good to see you.